We will call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Everyone, would you please join us in the Pledge of Beliegest in the Flag of Our Country?
The Pledge of Beliegest in the Dood flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The minutes for the previous meeting of July 22nd, 2020 were distributed. Any additions, corrections, and deletions? Does everybody have a chance to review those?
I did. I found one spelling error, but I don't think it's significant.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Who's the motion? Who's the second?
All first and second.
I'm the second, correct.
Roll call. Mr. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mrs. Pellfree.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Okay. So we will go ahead and proceed with the agenda for this evening. The case we have this evening is forty-four dash twenty dash Z for Madeira Place LLC. Mr. Wright, could you please provide a case summary for us?
Yes, sir. This is an application to rezone the subject property from R1 to R4, single family, for a twenty-eight lot subdivision. The lot's located off of Crest Point Court, which is a new development that the zoning commission approved about a year ago in Magnolia Trace.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear that. Could you repeat that last piece about a year ago?
About a year to a year and a half ago, something to that effect. Basically, the subdivision's accessed off of Magnolia Trace. Shaler Run Creek runs through the southeastern corner of the site. Property is not located in a focus area. Includes an existing single-family home and accessory building, which will be demolished as part of the project. Land use in the vicinity is somewhat mixed. We have PD District with Clough Pike Baptist Church there, and then the surrounding parcels are R1 and R4, single family, with the estates of Shaler Ridge and Magnolia Trace Community directly adjacent and west of the subject property. The land use plan does indicate that a single-family residential of moderate density is supported in this area of the township. It indicates it calls for a land use intensity of two and a half to four units an acre. Generally, this falls squarely in that realm at 2.74 units per acre, and it is identical to the density, well, nearly identical to the density of Magnolia Trace and estates at Shaler Ridge. The R4 Single Family Residential District regulations are presented for the zoning commission's review. You can see we are doing a consolidated, combined design formal plan here. It's pretty much the standard application process that all of our residential developments follow now. Fire Department has reviewed the proposal and indicates that aside from customary development reviews and approvals during the permitting phases, they have no objection to the development. The applicant proposes to rezone this parcel to R4. This will be a twenty-eight lot, moderate-density subdivision. Typical lot widths will be averaging sixty feet in width at the building setback line. Basically, it's identical configuration to the adjacent new development, Magnolia Trace. Nineteen point three five percent open space with remaining common area to be maintained by an HOA. I would note the R4 regulations do require a minimum open space of twenty percent, which can be accomplished very easily through a slight amendment to the lot configuration. The topography on the site, initially, there was some conversation about a connection to Clough Pike. The site distance and geometry of Shaler Road and Clough Pike intersection don't lend to an access point at this location. Additionally, I would note, if you recall, the Magnolia Trace development, the Stub Street was specifically provided to allow for future connectivity in both the zoning commission approval as well as the county planning commission regulations, which require that. So that is why we have the connection from the existing development to the parcel in lieu of a connection to Clough Pike. There's also some significant grading challenges that are associated with that connection. That's a rather, that would be a rather steep approach and probably would not, it would be very difficult to achieve the preferred slope of around, I mean, eight percent is preferred, ten percent, I think, is the maximum in the county subdivision regulations. So that is challenging in that regard. There is a sidewalk included, which would mirror the typical street section of Magnolia Trace. It would also indicate that they have preserved the riparian areas along the streams to the extent that they're required, and the open space does achieve that goal. The action required this evening, and there is a, it should be section six fifty through six fifty-nine of the zoning resolution, to, the action required is to recommend approval, approval with some modification or denial of this request to the Board of Trustees. To rezone this property from R1 to R4 with the accompanying formal plan as submitted and with any other modifications deemed appropriate by the Board. Agency comments, should you choose to grant favorable consideration, agency comments, as always, are included. Comprehensive landscaping plans should be required for the site to ascertain the adequacy of entry monument, landscaping, streetscaping, or buffering applications. Increase the amount of open space to the required minimum twenty percent by adjusting lot layout configurations. Entry monument and wayfinding signage shall be submitted for administrative review and approval prior to permitting, and address all remaining R4 technical plan requirements, which can be reviewed administratively for compliance as a checklist-style review. And specifically, I believe that's section six fifty-four and six fifty-six inclusive of the R4 regulations. We essentially have a punch list of, we go down the things that are to be on the plan. So that concludes my report, and I'm happy to entertain any questions at my house.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wright?
I have none.
We will proceed then to call on anyone, applicant or representative, to present their case. So who is here to present on behalf of them?
Good evening. My name is Pat Monger, and I'm with Brookstone Homes, which will be the home builder in this development, or one of the home builders, I should say. So just, you know, obviously Cory went through, you know, the nuts and bolts, if you will, of the development in terms of densities and lot sizes and things like that. One of the things that I just wanted to touch, touch base a little bit on is, you know, the overall nature of the development. I mean, when we first were looking at this, obviously, as we're proposing now, it is clearly an extension of an existing, you know, Magnolia Trace with, with the Crest Point Court, you know, the continuation of Crestview Court as it, as it stopped on the Magnolia Trace. Originally, we were looking, we had the development coming in off of Clough, and some of the things that Cory talked about were challenges, you know, much like anything, you know, nothing is impossible. But there's certainly the grade coming off of Clough Pike and getting up to the top there. We're going to be outside of what the county subdivision regulations call for in terms of percent grade, so that was, that was, that was one of the major focuses, to shift from a sort of a, its own sort of identity, if you will, versus an extension of Magnolia Trace. The other sort of change was the ongoing relationship that we have with Driz Company. We, we opened up conversations with them, and they're going to co-build homes in this development. So essentially, it's, it's going to be, I don't know if it'd be exactly a fifty-fifty, you know, split, but Driz, Driz will be the building as well as Brookstone Homes within this. So when that sort of, those two dynamics sort of collided, if you will, the reality of the grade and some of the challenges with site distance and the grading of having its own unique separate entrance off of Clough kind of combined with the partnering and the relationship that we, our business relationship that we have with the Driz Company led us to this, this layout. So that is sort of the, if you will, the evolution. We didn't, we didn't start out this way clearly. That's the way we're, we're proposing to end and, and the way we would like to develop this property. I have Nick Selhorst here, he's with Choice One. He's our, they're our site engineers that are working through, they've done all the preliminary analysis, so if there's some technical question, mix here. And I noticed also, we have the property owners, Dave and Janet McGrew. I believe they could vouch for me that the, some of the preliminary drawings that when we were in, in the contract negotiations on the land purchase side of the equation, they, they look quite a bit different than, than this drawing. So our original, original plan was to come off of Clough, but a lot of things pushed us in a different direction. So, you know, with that, as far as the recommendations, obviously, you know, some of those would happen as a matter of course, you know, complying with subdivision regulations and, and some of the other, you know, county engineers, traffic, and all the different requirements that other county agencies may require. We'd certainly expect to meet or exceed those expectations as far as the open space. I think that, I know that that can be achieved with the, some modifications, slight modifications to the, to the lot lines in terms of the widths, or not the widths, but the depths of those lots. And as far as the landscaping aspect of it, again, there needs to be, there's really, as it, as it lays out right now, there's not a whole lot of space, you know, available from the end of, say, the, you know, the Magnolia development to this one, which we're proposing to call it the Woods of Magnolia Trace. So we would expect to have some sort of monumentation at that divide, if you will, in between or at the beginning of lots, our lots thirteen and fourteen, somewhere, somewhere in that, in that vicinity that we would have a more elaborate, you know, entry monument, if you will. So with that, if there's any specific questions that I can answer or Mr. Selhorst would...
I do, I have, I have a question, Mr. Monger.
Sure.
The, the concept has been presented fairly clearly, but you submitted this as a combined concept and formal plan, yet many of the formal plan requirements are missing from the plan. Is there a reason you submitted it with so many of the aspects of the plan not included? Plan requirements?
What's the matter, Mr. ...?
About fifteen. I could go down, I'm not going to go down through them tonight, but in the formal plan, you've got sections A through R, and about half of the, those in the detailed section are missing. The landscaping is mentioned, a lot of the, I'm sure you've gone over this list, but a great many of them. And if we should choose to make a recommendation to approve this, it'll be a burden to you as well to get all of these cleared up prior to the trustees' hearing of this case, just so you're aware of that. I'm just curious, this, there's, there's a lot of technical specs that are missing, and you can go through the list with Mr. Wright when you have an opportunity. I suspect you already did that, though.
It's probably just miscommunication. I mean, I'm sure most of the things on the checklist are being used, but you said...
All right. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak for, present for the case? Hearing none, we will proceed to the other stack. I'm, I'm just going to call these up, and again, we can do one by one, or if you guys want to come up together, because I know, yeah, because, say, Christie and Mark Goodspeed first? So whatever, whatever you guys are comfortable with, together or separate?
Whatever you want to do, Ben.
So, first question I have is, is when you guys put in Magnolia Trace, the water retention ponds that you put in, or that they put in, the issue that we have is they're not sufficient. His house has flooded twice since that went in, and I'm assuming up in the upper corner, I'm seeing a water retention area, is that correct?
Yes.
It is?
Correct.
Okay. So where, where you've got the arrow, I'm seeing water retention. The problem that you have is, is from sites thirteen all the way adjacent to our property, that is a cliff.
On the south side?
On the south side, so closest to, to where Shaler would be. So from thirteen all the way to one.
Yeah, I'm on the other side of Clough going the other way, so I know right where you're at.
Okay. So with that, where are you putting the water? We've already got water dumping from Shaler onto this first parcel. So you actually have, down the sewer line, there is a private drive. Where that private drive is, right on the other side of it, you're dumping water from Shaler, out of twelve-inch conduit. And when that pours out, we've got flooding every time it rains. So then, not only are we going to have that, we're also going to have all this water coming off the hillside from you creating a water flow because subdivision now is no longer woods. So what are we doing with that water?
Well, another thing is, I live right on the corner. I've had the sewer back up twice in my basement. Okay? And you got the Magnolia, okay, you got all the stormwater and the sewer water, and since, since I've lived there and they've built, I mean, the water on a hard rain coming up in my yard is getting higher and higher. So you allow a subdivision like this with that much more stormwater, that much more sewer, I'm afraid of what it's going to do to my house. I, I've got water on a hard rain coming up within twenty-four to my house, okay? It's been in his garage already.
And my garage is way...
Is, just question, is, is the creek just swelling when it rains?
The creek is swelling because of the runoff.
Creek is swelling, but you got all the runoff from Magnolia Trace coming down now, and then the more water you got going down the creek from the new subdivision, there's going to be that much more volume, which is going to back it up that much more.
I guess what we're getting is, I just don't see water retention, enough water retention based on what I'm seeing is, would be number one. Number two would be the fact that we purchased and built on these as R1, and now they're being looked at being rezoned. To put houses behind us on something that was a single-family unit, and to put twenty-eight houses is just preposterous.
Well, I got, I got a question for you. What's your requirement? How much land do you have to have to put more than one house on it? I mean, these are what, quarter, third-acre lots? I know they're both on the other.
Yeah, subdivision regulations permit this land to be subdivided.
Okay, so it means I can do it on the corner then, because I've got enough land there that I could subdivide it.
You'd have to take out of the county. The county handles subdivision regulations.
Yeah, well, I've got access to the road, I've got egress, I got all that stuff. I don't see anything that'll stop me from putting quarter-acre lots right there on the corner, you know?
Is that correct?
It's on R1 right now.
Well, I just had to get a variance, so if you can do it for them, you should be able to do it for me then.
No, these are twenty, the, the lots being proposed here, what, what they can build on with R1 specifications is two-point-two units per acre, and with the R4, they're getting a bump to two-point-seven because of the open space they're allowing. So they're going from two-point-two to two-point-seven, and that's a bump that we typically permit on an R4 when there's open space being preserved to maintain the, the natural features. Now, with the stormwater issues you're encountering, have you been in contact with the county sewer and water district?
We have, and the pipe that's there currently, they told us to extend it, but they're not going to do anything about it. That basically it's our problem.
Well, and as far as the sewers go, I mean, they got, what, how big a sewer line is there? Three foot?
Three foot.
Three foot diameter. And I had sewer back up on my basement twice.
So it's an ongoing issue.
And, and you keep adding that much more to it? I mean, who's going to take responsibility for that? And how do you determine, how do you determine if this is, is it good for the builders or is it good for the individual? How do you make a judgment call on something like this? Do we really, do you ever show favor for the small guy versus the corporation and the builders?
And rezoning it from R1 to R4, how many houses are they gaining technically? If there's twenty-eight on this, how many would there be if it was state R1?
About five.
So if you delete five, maybe it would go to twenty-three?
Right.
So basically, they're reaching for more money.
But, but they're going, well, but the, the idea is to go to R4 to give us more control. If it's an R1, if they develop as an R1, they go in there and they clearcut the entire property. Nothing's left, and they clearcut everything, they pipe...
But they clearcut it and they add five more houses, because there's no more woods. They didn't take all the...
Well, no, there's still quite a bit of green space there.
Sure. That could, under R1, that could all go away.
And then the, the stormwater problems would be worse than, than what they will be with this. There, there will be no retention basins. They, they cookie cutter it, so we, we're very limited in what we can deny. If we deny something, we end up in court and we can't typically fight these things successfully. So we try to develop as effectively as we can to give us the most control we can over the, over the development. We can't stop the development, but we can control it.
So what you're calling green space is unusable. It's not even touchable.
It's down on the ground.
It's down, it's down in the creek. What they've got drawn is not giving any green space.
Nobody, nobody could get to it, falling down the hill.
It would be in water. So, so this little ridge that you see, the back side of what their properties would be, is, is a cliff, a thirty-five-foot cliff that our house would look at. So there's no way, there's no real green space that they're giving.
Not for any kids to use.
Not for anybody to use anything.
Or even enjoy looking at. Here's, here's...
Yeah, you have to step off of your foot.
Here's the thing, gentlemen. I've, I'm an old ten-fifty Shaler, lived in the valley for forty-three years now. When I bought the property, I came to this township hall, and they not only assured me, they told me that I would never get a variance from R1 in that land area. Well, I guess we don't never say never. And I realize you only own what, what you have a deed to, but in some degree, I hold our elected officials responsible for upholding what they said they would uphold. R1, this used to be country, not country anymore. I realize that. Life moves on. Old gets here quick. But it's time for our directors of Union Township to take a serious look at where we're going and what it's doing to those that have bought here in good faith, looking to live in the country that no longer exists. And yeah, water issues in the valley, I've had a few incidences, but they are coming faster and harder than they ever have before in forty-two years. So development around us is a washout problem. We need to look seriously at that beyond a better tax base to a realistic living situation for people who already own. to a realistic living situation for people who already own. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question, if, if I'm, Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, but the property where Magnolia Trace is now, the people that owned it wanted to put three houses on there, and it was denied on all that land. And yet, all those houses that are there now were okay. Now, you tell me where the reason is in that. Is it strictly a tax base that you need money for the township? Or why was that, why was that niched to put three houses where they got twenty-five?
They approved three. They wanted five.
Oh, they wanted five, okay. Well, they sure still enough land, that it was still niched.
Obviously, there's twenty-something now.
I'm not aware of it.
Huh?
I'm not aware of it. I'm not aware of what you're speaking about. I have no knowledge of it.
Well, I, yeah, but...
We'd have to look it up, Ben.
Yeah, well, we can look it up, but it's, it's, it's a fact, 'cause he knew the people that owned it. So I could get that information. Anyhow, that's pretty much all I gotta say.
Um, and then we have the bishops?
They spoke.
Yeah, we all spoke.
Okay, you guys are all together? The three houses right there on the south, okay, thank you.
Mr. Toff, can you read the, the names of the people who spoke, so we can capture them, put them record?
Christie Goodspeed. Mark Goodspeed. Matt Bishop. And Barry Bishop.
Okay.
I do have one more question, if I can.
If they put the subdivision in, and there's, we have a major issue with all this water because of all the sewer and the drainage and all this stuff. Is anybody gonna be responsible for it, or are we just stuck with it? Is anybody gonna be responsible for it? Is the builder's gonna be responsible for it?
The builder works it out with the county sewer and water district.
Right, that, that, that's the county sewer and water district.
But you can't sue the county, right? If my basement gets flooded four or five more times?
I have no idea.
So it clearly hasn't had any results from them so far on what's been going on. Correct. So who takes responsibility more for it, if we rezone? And it has to, if it even gets worse than it is today? There's gotta be, you've got a lot of witnesses here now, that's gotta be an answer.
You want to talk about the jurisdictional nexus?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Mr. Wright's gonna address the jurisdictional issue.
So the jur, there's a jurisdictional nexus, I, I'll, I'll discuss here. So townships do not regulate stormwater, we're actually prohibited from regulating stormwater. Claremont County, uh, Claremont County administers the Stormwater and Water Management and Sediment Control Regulations. I've been doing this for sixteen years, and I worked at Claremont County prior to that. There's an entire department, they go through complicated stormwater engineering, they look at, um, you know, design storm, and then typical storms, and all, and all these things. A lot of guys that are a lot smarter than I, you know, with calculators and everything else can look at. And then they size these basins for that, and they have to take what's called a pre-development condition, okay? And then they have to look at what the post-development condition is. So yeah, so, so Claremont County regulates the stormwater, so that is squarely where your stormwater issues reside, if you have them, okay? Similarly, Union Township does not operate a sanitary sewer department. We actually are prohibited from doing that as well when a county has one. Claremont County runs the sewer and water district. There is a twenty-one inch sewer line that runs through your property, based on the plans that Mr. Selhorst provided. There's also a twelve inch sanitary line on the north side. I don't know which one they're gonna tie into, they all go to the same place. They all run, um, east down toward, uh, Shaler and Bach Buxton, and then, and then that way, and then they go down the new micro tunnel that the county built down, uh, in the bottom lands down there, uh, off of, uh, Benning and all that. Yeah, they, they all tie in and, and do that. And so, so Claremont County is who you address your sanitary sewer backups to. Part of that could be surcharging from rainwater, 'cause some of the, some of the sewer lines that are older. What happens is, when the groundwater gets into them, they fill up, they normally function okay. But it's not because of sanitary sewer capacity, it's because the pipes are leaking. And so that's a maintenance issue for the county. And, um, you know, again, they have to look at these things, they look at the capacity of that, there's an entire department that looks at the capacity of that. Regarding the, uh, the site, what I can tell you is, what I see in the typical section, there is a sump collector line. A lot of your older subdivisions don't have sump collector lines. What that does is that takes all the sump, uh, that's designed to take all the sump and gutter water. Instead of, you know, the old, you know, like the sixty, seventy subdivisions where they would cut the curb, and then you get the ice. I, I have that in my, where I live, you get the ice skating rink out on the street or whatever. They don't do that anymore, they put it into a sump line. So all that water goes into sump line, and then that goes into the storm system, and then it's controlled. So every development, so if you think about stormwater control, stormwater control has gotten exponentially better from nineteen seventy, where they had no rules, to the late eighties and early nineties, where they had some rules, to the mid two thousands, where they have more restrictive rules, to now, they're incredibly restrictive on the, on the stormwater. So what you're seeing is, in Shaler Run, you're seeing the influence of development from forty years ago. And you're seeing, you're not seeing design storms, you're seeing abnormal rain events. And I know they feel like they're more frequent, or whatever.
Well, they are.
They are, they, they, yeah, but they're, but they're called design storms. And what they don't mean is that it's a one in five hundred, five hundred years it's gonna happen. It means that any given year, it's a one in five hundred chance that it's gonna happen, or it's a one in one hundred chance that it's gonna happen.
Twice, twice in two years.
So if it's a hundred-year storm event, that would, that would be right.
Yeah, and I go down to the sewer department, I ask them about this, and, uh, they say, well, we can't do anything until it happens three times.
Oh, the sewer department, your sewer backup?
Yeah, well, they, they ended up paying for a, a, uh...
Do you have a backflow preventer?
Backflow valve.
Well, that, that's positive.
Well, it helps, but it's not foolproof. And it doesn't keep the water from getting up in the creek and coming around to my window, which, which my sewer probably might be taking up. But all the water coming from the stormwater doesn't mean it's not gonna be raising the creek level, does it?
No, no, I may move it there, but I can tell you that they have to, based upon my knowledge of the stormwater regulations, because we, we build things too. And, um, you have to discharge no greater than the rate of development on the site pre-development. So they go through, that's what I'm saying, they go through a complex calculation, they look at the design storm, how much water the wa, that comes off the site now, as it sits right now. And then they have a post-development condition, and there's runoff coefficients, and all those other things that they apply to pavement, and grass, and rooftops, and all these different surfaces. And then these guys run these calculations, and they're approved by Claremont County. Claremont County looks at those calculations and they approve them, and they say, yeah, your basin and your outlets are sized fine, or no, you need additional capacity. That, that, that's just how they do it, and that's how the county does it, and the county regulates that.
So you cut down all these trees and suck up the water, you put all the roads and the storm sewers in, and they figure it's gonna be a, an even slot.
They have, what I'm saying is, they have to provide for that in the development, if the development is going to be successfully permitted and approved at the county level. They have to review and approve the stormwater condition.
So if, they're not gonna be putting any more water down, down the creek than there is now?
The goal of the stormwater detention regulations is to increase the amount of time that the water flows off the site, so that it is the same amount of runoff at the discharge point.
That's what your retention ponds for.
That's what the retention ponds are for, it's to slow everything down, so you don't get one big rush of water. It slows it down, and it drains it over a longer period of time. That's what that does. So the pond fills up, and it's got a little tiny opening down on the bottom, and then it's got a bigger opening, and then it's got a bigger opening, and then it has overflow. And as it fills up, that, that water is, is being discharged at a very slow rate. And then they also now have to put sediment basins in there during the development period. So there's actually like a sediment filtering basin, and then they have, like, they put the bags around them. And a lot of times what happens is, where you see these adverse events is during the construction process. 'Cause you get, you get, because they have extra protection on the inlets and on the, uh, on the drains and all those things that cause these things to fill up. And they don't drain as well as the as-built condition. So when it's finished, they function properly and all that, but sometimes you get leaves, or, you know, they put those straw bales in, and the straw bales come apart, and then the straw bales, you know, so... That's just part of development. But at the end of the day, I think what Mr. Lewis and Mr. Toff were saying, and I don't wanna speak for my zoning commission, but under the R1 regulations, you can develop between twenty-three and twenty-four houses, uh, tom, excuse me, twenty-two and twenty-three houses as it sits right now on this condition, right now, just on an R1, it's twenty thousand square foot lot.
I don't understand why there's no restrictions with that, or stuff.
Well, I mean, there's no, so there's no aesthetic, there's no aesthetic restrictions, there's no open space? I'm sorry, do you, who am I, would you, would you guys like me to address?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Why rezone?
Yes.
The retention ponds that now exist, the one on Shaler, and then the one back of the development that has already been, um, approved and installed. Are those retention ponds gonna be the only retentions, or are there more retention facilities to go in with this development?
Just what you see, the one.
No, what you see is what you get.
Yeah.
Were they designed for another twenty-seven houses, or whatever you're putting on this?
So that, so depending on how the site drains, and looking at the grading here, the site drains, um, down toward the Baptist church. And so that's why they sided the basin there, that is the outlet point where that will come in. And so that will be, that outlet point appears to be, and Mr. Selhorst can probably speak more intelligently to this than I can, but the outlet point is actually downstream from all of these properties.
No, no, the outlet, the, the Shaler retention pond is dumping, is dumping right on me.
So the Magnolia development, and based on this, looking at this, the way this drains, this site drains this way.
The real retention pond goes to the other side of the valley.
It goes to the other side by the church, yes.
The other side of the valley, that is correct. But my question is, is, are those two retention ponds designed to also take the offflow of what's being proposed right now?
I think there's a disconnect.
The offflow of what's being proposed goes to the retention basin that's shown on the map.
They're adding another retention pond for the...
At the north side.
They are adding a retention pond.
Yes, there's a retention pond there, and it, and it drains, and it outlets downstream.
By the church, church area?
Correct, 'cause the whole site drains that way.
Alright, that might help some.
Quick comment here, I think Mike answered some questions. So I heard, um, stormwater and sanitary sewers are issues. So there's two, there's two sewer lines that run, um, that would be available for development on this property. One on the south and one on the north. The way that this development's proposed, the, the extension of Crest Point Court is essentially, obviously runs out of middle of the property, which it turns out to be for the ridge of the property. It, it, it flows, obviously, rainwater will flow in, uh, half of the, the group property, the bank, drains to the south, and not, never half drains to the north. The way that this road is developed and being designed is that, per, per the regulations, the, the, the requisite amount of stormwater will drain into the roadway, in front of the houses, whatever, into the roadway, and drain down into the basin. So stormwater will be independently managed on this site through that basin. And that basin will ultimately be sized appropriately, we're not, we're not, we're not relying on, on something, yeah, we're on our own. So we have to deal with stormwater on this development. And the way that the sewer is being run, obviously, things, you know, say if there's sewer, likes to run from, you know, from gravity, from high to low. And so all of this, the way that the, the streets will be designed, the homes will be designed, sewer system will be designed, all of the sewer flow will exit off of, through the end of Cypress Court, and through, but basically it's into the two cul-de-sacs. But it's going to the line that's to the milk pond. So, no, none of the, exactly, none of the sewer that would come off of this twenty-eight line would go into that south line. So if they're having problems with that south line, which it sounds like they're having what they call infiltration, um, issue. And so that means there's crack, you know, there's, you know, separations in the pipes, or cracks in the pipes.
They're, they're not, they're not having infiltration issues with the south line, the south line we put in nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay.
It's three foot, they're not having, the problem is volume.
Okay, so we're not, we're not touching the volume?
You're not touching it.
We're not touching it. All our volume is going through them, so as is our storm line. So hopefully, maybe that answers some questions.
But i, if it does not get rezoned R4, you still have to put the retention pond in to take the twenty-two ounces worth of stormwater.
Exactly.
No matter what, and if on lot twenty-eight, may get a smaller lot, if that retention pond by the county, Claremont County, may make it, make, make a bigger. They want you to picture it.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on.
Basically, they're looking for us.
Uh, Philip, uh, Correll, Carroll? The floor's yours.
I think that, uh, a lot of my questions have been answered, uh...
Okay, who, who else do we have? All three?
Jeff Betts.
Jeff?
Josh.
And Josh Haddix, okay.
Yep.
The floor's yours.
We're all part of the three subdivision Magnolia Traces there.
The new one.
And so what was, what was advertised and proposed to us, and one of the reasons that we all bought into this, was it was twenty-nine homes, wooded lots, right? That's what we bought into, and now we're obviously losing woods on at least half of the street. The other thing is, is the road that connects to the new trace, to the new...
Trace wooded, whatever it is called.
The Crest, Crest Point Court, the stub.
That we've got two homeowners, both that are here today, that live on that street, bought on that street, and asked the question, is this road ever gonna cut through? We were all told, no, we don't own that land, we don't have any control over that land, we don't have any plans to cut that street through. Two premium lots were sold on that, and now they're gonna be on a main drag back to twenty-seven homes.
Is that a question for the builder, not for us?
That's a, yeah, that's a question for the builder, that's nothing to do with that.
That's a question for the builder, I mean, that's not for this board.
Why would, when you say it's not for this board, we were told that, Drees told us that they...
But we, we didn't, we're not Drees, we have nothing to do with Drees, that is irrelevant to this board.
So who has the responsibility to let, allow that street to be open?
That was part of the requirement of that development, to have that street open.
It could go in, as R1, it could go in tomorrow.
So the, so the question I would have then...
No.
What's that, excuse me?
It, they could develop it as this is done right now, without us even doing anything additional to that.
Yes, so, so the whole point of the stub street is to facilitate future development. During the rezoning for your subdivision, the stub street was required. It, it was required and built.
So our, you're saying our issue is with Drees?
Correct.
Whatever, we don't know what Drees told you. We, I, nobody here does.
Mr. Wright, you had mentioned something, and I, and I missed it, and I apologize, something about a year ago, so we all moved in.
It was a year or a year and a half, a year and a half ago.
When this was talked about.
Yeah, when, when we did Magnolia Trace, yeah, something...
Drees would have went through a very similar process.
Correct, identical, actually.
Well, it's the exact same, yeah, of course.
The exact, it's, yes, the same process.
We get that. Yeah, no, no, we got one, so we're not worried about that. So David Kaylor, do you all know David? So he's a builder as well, okay? And he was looking to build on these, he was looking to put in, I think, six or seven around that creek that's there, or that big pond that's there right now? He was looking at putting homes along that...
Oh, that's the gentleman that was at the meeting that wanted to develop his property.
Is that, is this the same property that he was talking about?
No. I think so, that where he wanted to buy a parcel and put it in the front of the entrance. Remember the street?
Oh, I know what he's talking about, so...
Yeah.
So you're talking about the property on the other side of the church?
He wanted to buy parcels off of the property that was going to be developed as well.
Okay, so...
So there's more to that story.
Okay, that's alright. So there is a street that is off of Clough before you make that turn, it starts with a, uh, it is, it's, it starts with a D. I had it up on my phone a second ago, oh, here it is.
Dixie Drive.
Dixie Drive. That he said that they could come in off of Dixie Drive off of Clough Pike, and, and it seemed like a nice easy access road, it was not gonna be an issue or anything. The only concerns that we would have is, obviously, the address is one oh three one, Clough Pike, there's already a driveway in there to the home that's there, right? Why can't they come off of that street, off of Clough Pike into it? I realize maybe it costs a few more dollars more, but there's already...
No, a driveway is different than a street, the county engineer, I, I, I'm, I'm surprised it was even considered. I can't believe the county engineer's gonna permit another access to Clough Pike, so close to an intersection, a subdivision access, a driveway is...
So I'm not saying that they did approve it, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, they're not, the county's not gonna permit that.
They won't approve that.
We spoke to them.
Yes.
They did not want a, a street cut there, it was the distance to Shaler.
It's right, it's right on top of the intersection.
And they're honestly concerned about being a cut through when Clough backs up, people cutting.
Cutting through, right.
At least now, once this is built, only the people that live here will be driving here, as opposed to cut through.
Well, the cut through traffic was never, didn't seem to ever be part of it, because there was no entrance and exit off of that fell, Shaler into the Magnolia Trace and then through the other, so we are happy that you didn't cut that through. We didn't want to cut through, we're just trying to, to take the, the road that was there and understand that we don't wanna lose all of our trees. That's what we bought into.
Now, when you, when you say lose your trees, is this property that, that you own that you're talking about or property that you don't?
I'm across the street from it, so I look at all the trees, right, so we're on Magnolia Trace.
We live, we live in Magnolia Trace.
Okay, but so you're, you're, you're talking about property.
The ten acres that are.
We're talking about all the homes, so where's our street coming in on this? So we're talking about all the lots that are on fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven?
But that property isn't yours and you were under the assumption that you could keep anything from ever being developed on it?
No, I don't think that's a realistic approach, but we were hoping that, well, one, we didn't know that anybody would ever develop back there, obviously that was not the case, right?
But with the stub, there's stub streets, it's right there.
But two, but two, is it not, is it not your, some responsibility to leave some buffer layer there of trees that are already existing?
If, if we leave it R1, you will have less, you will have less trees, you will have no trees.
Well, I, I understand that. I, I understand that, and a lot of times when builders come in, they take all trees, so I get that.
R4 preserves more of that area that you're worried about, if we leave it R1, you will have no trees.
Yeah. So it's your understanding that there will be twenty feet of trees left, do you have any idea what that might be?
Well, you can see on the, on the, on the drawings here what they're proposing.
There has to be a twenty-foot buffer.
A twenty-foot buffer.
Is that this part right here? Is that?
I mean, that's, we can't control the topography.
Okay.
My whole issue is if they develop the sub-street there and you had the conversation with the builder at that time, that's an issue you need to take up with the builder.
Yeah, all of us had that conversation with the builder.
Again, that, that, we, we did, we weren't privy to those conversations, nor would we be.
Right. Yeah.
As, as a county, can we do it together, 'cause that's the whole reason I paid a lot premium, obviously now it's with Drees, you don't do this shit.
We, we have nothing to do with Drees and, and we are simply here to hear a rezoning issue.
I know, I hear ya.
And address those concerns.
Yep, I got you.
So that, that has nothing to do with us and the fact that there is a stub street there and you raised the question then, again,
Right, I get that, okay.
that's the conversation I would have.
Okay, I understand.
So are they gonna revisit the open space, that there's only nineteen percent now existing?
They have to revisit the open space, correct.
Correct.
And is, is that open su- space where the creek is on the south side, is that really open space?
Any place that's green is considered open space.
Because it's a creek.
Any place that's shaded green?
Okay.
You can see.
But there's no, there's no access.
It's open space.
But there's no access to that.
There's not supposed to be access to that.
Totally inaccessible.
Again, we will control the topography.
What we have discovered, everything is accessible, with the right size bulldozer.
Bulldozer.
So in Article Six, under six fifty-four, it talks about the open space.
Correct.
And the disposition of that open space and how it's to be used.
I didn't hear that last part.
And how it's to be used, which isn't accurate to say it's not supposed to be accessible. It says in here it's supposed to be open space for parks, recreation and related uses, or donated by developer.
Corey understands more of this than we do, so Corey, would you like to address that question?
So there's two types of open space, there's active open space, which would be, as you're talking about soccer fields, parks, playgrounds, and passive open space, which would include slopes, sensitive soils, wooded areas. Both are desirable to be preserved or, or to be included if possible. Quite frankly, the latter has more ecological value than a field that people put pesticides on and mow and, and all those things. And so either of those things can count toward open space. Similarly, we allow for the control of the open space to be vested with an HOA. I would imagine that this will probably have its own HOA, they may actually approach your HOA to combine those, which could actually lessen your HOA costs. I don't know what you pay a year, I can't imagine it's a crazy amount, because you don't have a pool, you don't have a club house.
Well, I've been there six months and it keeps going up.
Right, so.
You've got all kinds of things to talk about there, but.
So if you, if you, if you double the number of units, your bill, I don't know if it ever works that way, I don't know.
It might double my bill, too.
They just wanna increase it much more.
But to be, but to be honest with regard to open space, the passive open space is actually preferred because number one, from an HOA perspective, you don't have to do anything to it, just let it go, number two, it has greater, it has greater ecological value, quite frankly. Now, I could be wrong, if you guys want a playground or whatever, I mean, I'd take it up with Drees, but sometimes they go in after the fact and do that, sometimes they don't.
Okay, so they're gonna revisit that and change some lots around a little bit to, to get the twenty percent?
They have to meet the twenty percent requirement.
And then when, when can we view that proposal, is that the final proposal?
So if the board acts favorably and that condition is included, which that is a perfunctory, that is a requirement. If, if the board acts favorably and recommends approval, once, we, we, we cannot issue a, a finding that, so, so there's several layers in this development process. So you got the zoning and then you have a subdivision review process that goes to the county. The county asks for a letter from the township as part of the development review. We can't issue that letter unless it meets the standards that these guys recommend and that are ultimately approved. So we, we're not gonna sign off on a, on a plan that doesn't meet that twenty percent requirement if they establish a condition that says you have to be at twenty percent. Now, looking at that, they're at, um, let's see, one nineteen, they're at one point nine five, so they literally have to get another five one hundredths of an acre to do that, it's really not very, it's, it's fractional. And I, I don't see that being a problem, I mean, they could basically look at lot nineteen and twenty and twenty-one and continue some of that or they could, you know, put, put some buffer along seventeen or they could, you know, mess with the lot depths on lots thirteen, five through thirteen to kinda incre- to decrease those lot depths, which would necessarily increase that open space and they could very readily achieve that.
Yeah, the thirteen and fourteen lots are the ones that are right on top of these two guys. So that's what, that's what me and Mr. Lewis were looking at.
What was that, you said about thirteen and fourteen?
Thirteen and fourteen are the ones that butt up against closest to your properties.
Right.
So, um, the rest of that is just existing open space that they have built in for the other subdivision.
We got no dog in this one, okay.
Thank you all, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else would like to speak this evening, I've read all, everybody's paper. That being said, we will close the public forum of this meeting. And the board will discuss.
Get a copy of what all this is?
That's up to the administrator down there, that's not a question for me.
Yeah, yes, you, you can come into our office and get a copy, we have extras. I'm sure we can run, we can run copies for you.
We have a number of things to address.
Mr. Lewis, if I could address the technical review comment.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Address, address the technical review comment.
I'm on, I'm on the other side of the street.
When I went back through this and I look at this.
I'm on, I'm on the higher ground.
They're really missing.
I'm on ten sixty-four Clough.
Which they clarified, and that, that did help.
Ten sixty-four, from the corner, you, you don't see it on this, but we're, I am up this way.
Oh, you're just past.
Cindy Hennecker's here, that's all Marter clients, yeah, yeah, she's passed.
Yeah, the way to have a, to form a motion to, to approve, it'll, it'll just be to make sure that there's section six fifty, six fifty-six.
There's a lot of that information that is in there.
So Cindy's in that house.
And then we, and then they just have to make sure that they review that review and that's it.
There you go, and Chris just added a whole driveway back through there and poured concrete slant behind it, so it's in good shape.
How much acreage is this?
Uh, three point seven five.
We are in private session, there's not supposed to be any communication up here right now.
Thanks guys, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, there's not supposed to be any conversations going on.
Everyone, everyone, 'cause the mics pick up all the conversation in here, the mics pick up your conversation and this meeting's being recorded, so if you wanna talk, you go out, if you wanna talk, go out in the hallway.
Okay, um, conceptually wise, I, I have no.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
I believe the plan makes, I'm, I'm okay with the plan, I just think it's, it's missing some pieces we have to clarify that are provided to the trustees when they review the case. There, there's some technical details missing that we can request be provided to the trustees prior to their, their review.
Request additional modifications then?
Yeah. Yeah, the modifications that we state in the plan, but I don't have a problem with recommending approval. Is anybody else?
No, I have no problem with that.
It actually, it, it's better than leaving it R1.
I, I agree, I think it's better than it being, being R1.
Can I ask for a clarification? Or is it too late to talk? It's fine if it is.
Question.
For the, for the checklist of things, like the detail that's missing, that might have been a miscommunication on my part for like this first of the middle, so if there's technical data, then.
We'll, we'll, that's what we're talking about, we'll address that and we'll drop it in there for you guys to go through. Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any other?
Do we wanna make any kind of a recommendation as far as consideration for reconfiguring the layouts specifically in, in the region of lots thirteen and fourteen to provide additional buffering to those properties adjoining Magnolia Trace?
Yeah, did you see right here? Those are the areas that go right directly behind their houses.
I mean, some additional open space has to be achieved anyway, if, if we could incorporate that and increase the buffering. Thirteen and fourteen is the only place where the buffering gets thin, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, the buffering is very thick to Magnolia Trace.
And my general thought on looking at the layout, those are gonna be the two hardest to sell lots.
Yeah, I don't know.
For them, I mean, they're, they're the smaller lots, then they're, they're gonna butt up against there, it might be easier for them to combine those into one and, you know, have a bigger lot.
We could include that as a, something to consider.
Those are very narrow lots there, they're deep but they're narrow. The rest of them are fairly more spread out. Just for consideration.
What are you suggesting we combine?
Well, if you look at this, these two lots here are very small.
Yes.
And they are red covered.
Yes.
That's the main area that they gotta consider. If I were gonna buy a house back here, those would be the last two lots I purchased. Based on, you see the size of the other lots?
Yes.
Why can't you spread this out and there'd be two lots in the tree and two lots in it? You're losing two houses.
That's, I like that.
If I were buying a house in this subdivision, those would be the last two that I would, those would be the.
And these two next.
Even if you just start reconfiguring some of your free space.
You could, you could buffer it up to where they get.
So in these three, it would become two and then these three would become two.
That would be a recommendation for modification, all we can do is recommend it.
I like that.
Did you hear that?
What's that?
And again, it's just a recommendation for modifications, these three lots could be.
Well, I, I know, but we can't, we have to be careful about that, we can, we can indicate that we could, we would recommend consideration to increase the buffering between, in the, in the regions of lots thirteen and fourteen to, along the boundary to Magnolia Trace, and how that's achieved is up to them.
Right, okay, perfect.
Okay. This one, did you have for the, can we set that in?
Yep, I'll zoom it up.
Yes. I'm sorry?
To, to combine the lots?
The, the, the lot reduction, we've, we've always, always been hesitant to make a lot reduction recommendation. It, it's part of the perk for the R4, is, is you get extra, you know, extra lots are permitted if the open space is, is.
Preserved.
created and preserved. If, if, if the majority of, of, of the, of our commission wants to recommend the elimination of those two lots, then I'll, I, we can word it that way in there. I won't argue that, I wouldn't, it's not gonna be my recommendation.
But it de-incentivizes the zone change.
I'm sorry?
It de-incentivizes the change to begin.
Some lots.
We start cutting off.
Right.
Some lots, and it doesn't, but I agree.
I mean, it may be that the developer would come to that conclusion, it, well, maybe we need to remove that, but.
But I agree, Mr. Lewis, with your indication, with some recommendation of increased buffering on those two lots, not a loss.
Yes. And it, it may, it may wipe out those lots altogether, but that would be up to the builder.
And to the trustees and to the subdivision review.
Because we could leave it at R1 and that would, that whole thing would change and they could even put more, more lots in. Does that make sense?
Are you, you interested in reducing the number of lots?
Yes.
We'd have to get a consensus on that, Bill, do you have any interest in reducing and make, recommending a reduction of the number of lots?
No.
You don't have a problem with it or you don't?
No, I have no problem with it.
Okay. Again, it would fall to the trustees then. I mean, you could word it to the point where, I mean, in this area, they can be a little bit more creative, in this area, not so much. I would maybe speak specific.
Yeah, the two point seven density is a, is a very mild density in this area for, for an R4, we've seen R4s with higher
Right.
density than this, and so if they can increase that buffering and still maintain their, the.
The lot size?
The lot size, the lot, number, number of lots, I don't have a problem with the configuration, I'm just reluctant to say remove those lots and leave it at that, I, I think what we're looking for, the, the goal we want is to increase the buffering. If those two lots can be reconfigured somewhere else and, and still have the, and still achieve the twenty percent we're gonna require, I don't have an issue with it being twenty-eight lots, but I would like to see that buffering, that's my goal, is to increase that buffering there, not, not, not necessarily reduce the number of lots in the, in the subdivision.
Should, should we word it that, to find a way to reconfigure the buffering that is adjacent to thirteen and fourteen?
I just increase, find a way, consideration for increasing the buffering in, in the region of lots thirteen and fourteen along the boundary to Magnolia Trace.
Mr., Mr. Toff?
Yes.
I think that Mr. Correll has a comment.
Is that a talk?
Go ahead, nope. I think you're, you're sensing our angst on that, on those two lots.
Yeah, 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 and so one of the things, if you look at.
And it happens, it's just the nature of the requirement, but say lot sixteen, lot twenty-three, they're both corner lots if you will. So the requirements require you to have the same side setback as you do with the front.
Okay.
And so one possible solution to this situation would be, in the, in the final analysis, that maybe a side setback variance is granted for lots sixteen and twenty-three, which allow those to be physically closer to that Cypress Court, which creates space then that could be gained to the left.
For thirteen and fourteen?
For thirteen and fourteen, you've got a lot that everybody's, you know, concerned about.
That'd be.
So it's, it's shifting, it's, you know, it's moving things around.
But it frees up that additional space when you don't have those lots. But it frees up that additional space when you don't those lots.
But it frees up, it just frees up, I think, the space that you're looking for.
Okay, there we go, thank you. So, recommend reconfiguration of 16, Lots 16 and 23?
Yes.
Does that sound, that is-
This could be achieved via a, a side, a side lot, a side, side setback in Lot 16 and 23.
16 and 23.
There's the finding of fact section that you're doing.
All right, I'm ready to, uh-
Form a motion.
Form a motion. Uh, regarding Case 4-20-Z, well, before we do that, Carol, are you okay with that?
I think, yeah, and Daniel is as well.
Okay, regarding Case 4-20-Z, the zoning commission finds a submitted R4 plan application, and zone change request is consistent with the Horizon 2030 land use plan, but does not meet all of the plan development application requirements of an R4 combined concept and formal plan. Therefore, this commission recommends a submitted plan be approved, contingent upon adherence to the noted modifications specified in this motion. All required supplemental information and plan modifications shall be completed and submitted to the planning director no later than one week prior to the trustees' hearing of this case. Uh, findings in fact, the proposed development is not in a designated focus, focused district, however, the use itself is instrumental in support of the underlying single-family residential character of this area of the township. Surrounding parcels are R1 and R4 single-family with estates of Shaler Ridge and Magnolia Trace directly west, and the noted exception of PD directly north of the parcel Clough Pike Baptist Church. Modifications are as follows, the applicant shall address the concerns of the Claremont County Engineers Office, Claremont County Water and Sewer District, and the Union Township Fire Department, as well as all other public regulatory agencies prior to the final development of the plan, of final development plan approval. The applicant shall meet the requirements set forth in Section 654 of the Union Township Zoning Resolution Regulations, including but not limited to providing for a minimum of 20% open space on the submitted plan. The applicant shall meet the requirements set forth in Section 656 of the Union Township Zoning Regulations, inclusive of both concept and formal plan requirements, including but not limited to a com- a comprehensive landscaping plan that clearly defines entry landscaping, streetscaping, buffering, clearing, and grading limits. Entry monument and wayfinding signage shall be submitted for administrative review and approval prior to permitting. This commission recommends increasing the buffering in the region of lots 13 and 14, along the boundary to Magnolia Trace. This could be achieved with a variance of side yard setback in Lot 16 and 23. And that's all I have.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Daniel? We have, we have a motion and a second?
So now we have the opportunity to discuss if anybody has any issues or concerns with the, the motion as it stands.
Hearing none, roll call?
Roll call, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Helfried?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
And Mr. Talk?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, any other new business to come before this commission?
I have no business for the board, no further business for the board this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, any other, any old business? None?
I do not.
We are done. I will call for this meeting to be adjourned, yes.
One second, uh, item of housekeeping, I need to sign minutes.
I was gonna ask you right afterwards.
You sign the minutes.
You have the minutes signed, just make sure you give them to me.
Got it.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll throw those in the book, and then I, and then we would need, I guess, as a point of order, a motion, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will do said motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:10 PM. Meeting adjourned.
Do a second?
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Motion to second to adjourn, all in favor, signified by rising vote?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned, yes, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
By rising vote, yes.
No, I mean, to have a motion to-